Ipsilanti Township.
Trustee Eldridge or Treasurer Eldridge?
Present Civic Center, Ipsilanti Township.
Trustee Wilson?
Jimmy Wilson, located Ipsilanti Township.
Okay, Mr. Newman's not on yet and I'm Brenda Stumbo, Supervisor of Ipsilanti Township and I am present in the Township Civic Center. So the first item on the agenda and as soon as trustee Newman makes himself present, then we will acknowledge him. The first item on the agenda is public minutes and we have three minutes to allow public comments. Does anyone? If there were hand raised? Let's see. Miley Harris?
I'm sorry, I didn't have anything to say. What's my hand raised?
I thought it was, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Hi, everybody.
Okay. There's no public comments at this time. Consent agenda, we have the minutes of the January 19th work session and the regular meeting. As well as the statements and checks for February 2nd, 2021.
So moved Gerald Row.
Motion Gerald Row, support Aldridge to approve the minutes and statements and checks. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, Mr. Newman?
Yes.
You're present in Ipsilanti Township?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. The next item, all in favor, aye opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Legal update?
No update.
Okay. Under Old Business, we have the request to approve the proposal for professional services from CNC Consulting for the creation of a website redesign proposal in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand two hundred, which is budgeted line item 101-266-0008000 and this needs to be removed from table.
So moved Eldridge.
Support Swanson.
Motion by Aldridge, support by Swanson to remove from table. We'll do a roll call vote. Swanson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Eldridge?
Yes.
Wilson Jr.?
Yes.
And Newman?
Yes.
And Stumbo votes yes. The item is now properly before the board.
I would so move the request to approve the proposal.
Support Wilson.
So motion by Gerald Row, support by Wilson Jr. to approve the item that was previously tabled. I know that Travis McDougall is on available on Zoom if we have any questions from him. For him, it was tabled last time due to we didn't have a limit on not to exceed amount and if it does have to be amended, they can bring it back and ask for more dollars. So I appreciate putting in a limit on it in hourly rate as well. Hearing no more. Are there any other questions or comment? We're going to have an updated website, you guys, and this is going to be great. Well, this is going to do the proposal, then we're going to bid it out, but it'll be really good once we get it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under New Business, we have Resolution 2021-04, which is authorizing the Charter Township of Ipsilanti to sell to Scott Chatfield three vacant parcels, which is located at 29 Broadmoor Avenue, 24 Lakewood Avenue and 30 Lakewood Avenue in the amount of $10,000. Clerk Row?
I have Resolution 2021-04, authorizing the Charter Township of Ipsilanti to sell to purchaser Scott Chatfield three vacant parcels located at 29 Broadmoor Avenue, 24 Lakewood Avenue and 30 Lakewood Avenue. Whereas on or about December 28th, 2011, Washtenaw County Treasurer Catherine McCleary, acting in her capacity as foreclosing governmental unit under the authority of the General Property Tax Act, foreclosed upon certain properties of the Washtenaw County Circuit Court due to delinquent real property tax, which included three vacant parcels located in Ipsilanti Township to wit 29 Broadmoor Avenue, 24 Lakewood Avenue and 30 Lakewood Avenue. Whereas on or about December 30th, 2011, the Charter Township of Ipsilanti received a quick claim deed from County Treasurer McCleary, which included the legal descriptions of the three vacant parcels, which are as follows. Parcel 1, K11-02-457-007, Broadmoor Ave., Ipsilanti, Michigan, 48198, with a legal description of YP number sign 5531, lot 445, Devonshire subdivision number four. Parcel 2, K11-02-457-008, Lakewood Ave., Ipsilanti, Michigan, 48198, with a legal description of YP number sign 5520, lot 435, Devonshire subdivision number four. Parcel 3, K11-02-457-009, Lakewood Avenue, Ipsilanti, Michigan, 48198, with a legal description of YP number sign 5521, lot 436, Devonshire subdivision number four. And whereas on February 20th, 2020, Scott Chatfield requested the Ipsilanti Township Assessing Department to purchase the three vacant lots as described above, which were needed by him to develop, and I quote, "two eight hundred and seventy-five square feet drive-in restaurant buildings and two self-storage buildings of four thousand five hundred square feet and four thousand nine hundred square feet respectively", end quote, "on properties that are all continuous with the township's three vacant parcels, all of which are located between Lakewood View Avenue and Broadmoor Street near 2002 East Michigan Avenue and whereas at a regular board meeting held on April 21st, 2020, the Ipsilanti Township Board of Trustees authorizes the sale of the three vacant lots to purchaser Scott Chatfield, which according to the appraisal report prepared by Deputy Assessor Brian McCleary dated March 16th, 2020 are valued at $10,000 and whereas during the remainder of 2020 and 2021, purchaser Scott Chatfield has followed through in obtaining all the necessary approvals from the required reviewing agencies, including Ipsilanti Township, YCUA, Washtenaw County Water Resource Commission, needed to develop the drive-in and self-storage projects, which development will incorporate the three vacant lots owned by the township and will enable purchaser Scott Chatfield to adhere to all the stormwater management requirements, as well as construct an onsite retention basin to handle all of the runoff water from the site. And whereas on January 18th, 2021, Scott Chatfield signed the proposed purchase agreement, a copy of which is attached hereto and incorporated by reference, in which he will remit to the township in the sum of $10,000 in accordance with the appraisal report dated March 16th, 2020. Now therefore be resolved that the Charter Township of Ipsilanti Board of Trustees hereby resolves as follows. One, that the township board accept the purchase offer submitted hereto and authorize the execution of the purchase agreement by Supervisor Brenda L. Stumbo and Clerk Heather Gerald Row. Two, that the township authorize Supervisor Stumbo and Clerk Gerald Row to execute all documents required by Campbell Title Company to effectuate the transfer of the three vacant parcels to purchaser Scott Chatfield once a closing date has been scheduled. Three, that a copy, a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to Campbell Title as set forth in paragraph 23 of the purchase agreement. I so move this very lovely resolution, Mr. Winters.
Support Eldridge.
Motion Gerald Row, support Eldridge. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of Resolution 2021-05, Propose Ordinance 2021-494, an ordinance amending the Quota Ordinances Chapter 37 Liquor. Clerk Row?
I'm ready. All right, I have Resolution 2021-05, amending Chapter 37 of the Ipsilanti Township Code of Ordinances. Whereas the Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 37, contains provisions regarding liquor licensing, liquor control enforcement and liquor inspections and whereas Chapter 37 was last updated and revised in accordance with adoption of Ordinance Number 2005-360 on August 16th, 2005, and whereas the number of new onsite or on-premise liquor licenses available to be approved by the Board of Trustees is limited by a quota system mandated by state law and controlled by state liquor control regulations and whereas the number of on-premise liquor licenses available to be approved by Ipsilanti Township as a local governmental unit of the state is restricted by state law to one license for every fifteen hundred residents, which currently equates to a total of thirty-six on-premise liquor licenses based upon 2010 U.S. Census data reporting the township's population as fifty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-two people and whereas to date, the Board of Trustees has approved a total of thirty-one new on-premise liquor licenses intended to be used by businesses operating in Ipsilanti Township for the benefit of township residents and whereas an analysis of the new on-premise liquor license previously approved by the Board of Trustees shows that seventeen of thirty-one new on-premise liquor licenses approved by the Board of Trustees and intended for use in Ipsilanti Township, which equals approximately fifty-five percent of all licenses granted to applicants, have been sold by the applicant and transferred for use in other local government units within Washtenaw County. Whereas in addition to seventeen on-premise liquor licenses have been sold and transferred out of Ipsilanti Township, an additional five on-premise liquor licenses in Ipsilanti Township are currently held in escrow and are not being used. And whereas the typical monetary value of an on-premise liquor license asset offered for sale on the open market has been reliably reported to be as much as eighty times more than the current license application fee being charged by Ipsilanti Township. And whereas the seventeen new on-premise liquor licenses approved by the Board of Trustees and transferred out for use in other communities continue to be counted in perpetuity against Ipsilanti Township's quota of on-premise liquor license in accordance with the state law and regulations with no recourse available to retain or recover such licenses to promote future economic development for the benefit of township residents. And whereas in light of the pattern of loss of on-premise liquor licenses and a desire to improve the manner and processes to consider applications for new on-premise liquor licenses, Propose Ordinance Number 2021-494, attached updates and revises Chapter 37 in its entirety, defines the authority and the role of the Township Liquor Committee, clarifies the application process for various township departments, updates definitions to align with changes in state law, updates the minimum required contents of a license application, removes application fees and refers to a new fee scheduled to be adopted by the Board of Trustees, defines the process and criteria for annual license renewal and updates the criteria for non-renewal or revocation of a license. Now therefore be resolved that Ordinance Number 2021-494 attached hereto is adopted by reference. I would so move the resolution.
Support Wilson.
There's a motion by Gerald Row, supported by Wilson, to move the first reading of this ordinance. We had like an hour and a half discussion and there's lots of proposed changes to come back, you know, to the board for second reading, which happens often when you're doing ordinances. Are there any questions regarding the first reading of this ordinance by board members or public? There was just a lot of discussion and proposed changes, so I this ordinance refers to fees being adopted by the schedule and the application and we're adopting that separately. Is that everyone's understanding?
Correct.
It's attached to this ordinance, but so it doesn't the ordinance refers to the fact that it's going to be, the fees are separate. So I'm, I'm okay with doing the first reading. I think we, there's a lot of fine tuning and great comments that came from board members that we have to perfect, but I think it's it's a lot, a lot of work has been done and I know Angie King also did a lot of work on this in the past and so I appreciate everyone's work on it, but I just it's going to be changed by the second reading. That's I guess my only point I'd like to make. So when we do our ordinance, we have a motion to support, we have a roll call vote. Trustee Swanson?
Yes.
Peterson?
First reading?
Yes.
Clerk Row, Gerald Row?
Yes.
Treasurer Eldridge?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Newman?
Yes.
Stumbo votes yes as well, so the first reading is approved. The next item on the agenda is a request to approve an updated liquor license application.
Okay, I have Resolution 2021-06, liquor licensing fee schedule. Where is the
Miss, it's the application, are we doing the application or?
Sorry, did I miss it? You're right, right.
Just don't move the application, Eldridge.
Yeah, that's fine. Motion Eldridge?
Support Gerald Row.
Support Gerald Row. There were some changes made and recommended in the work session that need to be incorporated?
Yeah, I made those during the break and I'll pass those to the clerk and we'll get them out to everybody.
Well, and when we do second reading and let's take our time to do second reading and get everything right, I think the application will also be attached to it, right?
Correct.
That gives us another opportunity to, to see the changes that were made. I, I just have one concern that I, we didn't have time in the it's not a concern, it just, when people file an application with, with the township, we can like redact certain information, but we can't just destroy it. And in one section of this, I'm trying to find it now, they talked about after five days of the liquor committee meeting, if it was denied, it'll be destroyed. I, I'm not sure by state law, we can do that. So that's the only thing we have to look at again to make sure. I, and the sensitivity and the reason for wanting to do it, it was, there's a lot of financial and personal information there and I I completely understand that. I think we need to protect it, but I don't think we can destroy it like that. There's a panelists, is there? Oh, Gerald Row?
Um, thank you Supervisor Stumbo for, I, I can check with the retention, you know, like this, the filing, because I, I didn't think of that before, but um, I just wanted to clarify. I know that the ordinance refers to this fee, but are we saying that it needs to come back for a second reading? That wasn't my understanding, I guess, originally.
Second reading of what?
Like are we going to revisit the application next time?
The application is going to be changed per the discussion of the work session and it's not in the board packet that we're voting on. And it will be attached to the second reading is like the changes that we discuss on the application is not in the board packet.
Clerk Row, what I will do is make the changes and we can approve it this evening, bring it back so that at the next reading for the fee schedule and for the ordinance, I'll make sure it's there and everybody can review it again if we have to make subsequent changes or or anything, we can do it again.
Well, yeah, because we didn't know at the work session that we were going to make changes.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering and I know that, I know that we want to like, you know, move on this, but I, I'm just wondering if it should be voted on at the same time with the ordinance.
With the second reading?
Yeah.
So table it this time and make the corrections and bring it back?
What? That's an option. I don't, I'm looking for the will of the board.
That's a clearest process. It brings clarity and all the changes that were discussed in the work session would be part of it. Um, but it would have to be tabled, huh? Heather, Clerk Row, Gerald Row?
Um, Trustee, Treasurer Eldridge, is that a friendly amendment to our motion?
Sure, if that makes it easier for everybody.
All right, so we'll, we'll change to motion to table.
Okay, motion Gerald Row to table?
Until the next reading of the ordinance.
Your support?
Support Peterson.
Support Peterson to table, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Swanson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Row, Gerald Row?
Yes.
Eldridge?
Yes.
Wilson Jr.?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
And Stumbo votes yes as well. Would the same be too then for the next item?
I didn't hear anybody voiced any objections of the fee schedule, but
Okay. Next item on the agenda then is the liquor license, liquor licensing fee schedule, Resolution 2021-06. Clerk Gerald Row?
Sorry, sorry, I was just taking a note. All right, I have Resolution 2021-06, the liquor licensing fee schedule, whereas the Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 37, contains specific provisions establishing liquor licensing fees and whereas the number of new on-premise liquor licenses available to be approved by the Board of Trustees is limited by a quota system mandated by state law and controlled by state liquor control regulations and whereas the number of onsite premise liquor licenses available to be approved by Ipsilanti Township has the low, as the local governmental unit is restricted by state law to one license for every fifteen hundred residents, which currently equates to a total quota of thirty-six on-premises liquor licenses based upon the 2010 U.S. Census data showing the township's population of fifty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-two people. And whereas to date, the Board of Trustees has approved a total of thirty-one new on-premise liquor licenses intended for use by businesses operating in the township, Ipsilanti Township for the benefit of township residents. And whereas an analysis of new on-premise liquor control licenses previously approved by the Board of Trustees shows that seventeen of thirty-one new on-premise liquor licenses approved by the Board of Trustees and intended for the use in Ipsilanti Township, which equals approximately fifty-five percent of all new licenses granted to applicants have been sold by the applicant and transferred outside of Ipsilanti Township and other local government units within Washtenaw County. And whereas in addition to the loss of seventeen on-premise liquor licenses, five additional on-premises liquor licenses in Ipsilanti Township are currently held in escrow and are not being used. And whereas the seventeen on-premise liquor licenses approved by the Board of Trustees and transferred out for the use in other communities continue to be counted in perpetuity against Ipsilanti Township's quota of on-premises liquor licenses in accordance with state law and state regulations with no recourse available to retain or recover such licenses to further promote future economic development for the benefit of the residents of Ipsilanti Township. And whereas the typical monetary value of an on-premise liquor licenses offered for the sale on the open market has been reliably reported to be as much as eighty times more than the current license application fee being charged by Ipsilanti Township. And whereas the licensing fee currently being charged for new on-premise liquor licenses is misaligned with the true market value of such a licenses, thereby contributing to the continued pattern of loss of such licenses being sold and transferred outside of Ipsilanti Township to the detriment of economic development and township residents. And whereas the Township Liquor Committee has studied liquor licensing fees and has recommended removing licensing fees from Chapter 37 of the Code of Ordinances and adopting a separate liquor license fee schedule that can be periodically reviewed and revised as necessary by the Board of Trustees for the benefit of the community. Now therefore be resolved that the liquor license fee schedule attached hereto is adopted by reference. Just for the record, I'll read it in, the liquor license application fee schedule, effective upon adoption, new on-premise liquor, on-premise licenses such as Class C Tavern Hotel, $5,000. New manufacturing or non-rental licenses with on-premise permit such as microbrewer and winemaker, $5,000. Transfer of location and ownership of existing on-premise licenses, $5,000. Transfer of location of existing on-premise license previously approved by Ipsilanti Township, $2,500. Transfer of ownership of existing on-premise licenses previously approved by Ipsilanti Township, $2,500. Transfer of location of existing on-premise licenses previously approved outside of Ipsilanti Township, $5,000. Other changes, stock ownership, addition of space, deletion of partner, et cetera, $1,000. Other required changes not specified, $1,000. I would so move the liquor license application fee schedule.
Uh, support Eldridge with one friendly amendment. During the work session, Director Radzik made mention of a license renewal for building fire inspections, liquor control officer inspection. The total's 150 and I think we talked about including that on the fee schedule.
That's a friendly amendment?
Yes.
I accept.
Dan, you brought this forward. Do you want to talk about why we were increasing it and the reasons for all the changes?
Uh, it just is, is mentioned in the resolution. It just brings us more in line with other communities throughout southeast Michigan. The fees we had previously were excessively undermarket value and we've seen the loss of so many licenses through the years that were obtained here in the township and taken to other communities and by bringing our fee schedule into consistency with our, our neighbors throughout the region, it should only provide us as a benefit to try and keep those licenses within the township to help us down the road with future economic development issues.
And the liquor committee members or Trustee Swanson, Wilson Jr. You guys, I know, put a lot of time into it as well, correct? Are you? So, in support of the changes that are proposed?
Yeah.
Okay, because I know you guys met and talk a lot.
Yeah, and we've talked about this on previous board, the previous board as well, as far as coming up to speed with other municipalities as well as trying to have more serious applicants.
And consistency and fairness and I, that's a good reason to do it. Any questions or comments from anyone else? I, I think the fees look high, but I am going to trust the fellow board members and they can be adjusted if they are, they seem to be too high. If we run into some issues where it's like totally cost prohibitive for anyone to do some of the newer licenses. I'm just not as familiar with them as well, none of us are really because they're new and new things come up all the time, but I do appreciate all the effort, um, that I know my grads expand hours writing and trying to revise the ordinances and stuff and Stan and the liquor committee, so I appreciate all the effort in trying to make it a, a fair and equitable ordinance, so. Mr. Newman?
Yes, I just wanted to say, uh, this is a comment. I just wanted to say that uh, uh, it looks, you know, I, I, I think that this is, uh, while it may be high, I think it would only bring serious people only. Uh, and I think because before, to my understanding, at the prices that it was, it was easy to transfer to someone else where, where they could take it outside of the, uh, outside of the township. So this, this, you know, is a good, a good start.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, well, the only comment I would add to this kind of, this, uh, point is this. Uh, there's a great deal of material that has to accompany the liquor license application. And there's going to be an awful lot of work done by the, uh, liquor committee and probably outside consultants that are going to be reviewing, uh, everything from business plans, uh, to background checks to, uh, might even have some legal issues in regards to, uh, uh, these applications. So I do think right now that it's trying to at least make sure the township has some kind of a cost recovery for all the time and effort that a lot of people are going to be probably, uh, expending on reviewing these applications if they actually get filled out in the manner and spirit called for in the application document. Uh, there could be some, I know in the past, um, trustee Wilson and my, and you yourself, we looked at the one lease that was, um, and that involved the Woodstone Inn, uh, where they, where they were trying to lease that establishment for liquor license and, um, I'm not sure who drafted that lease, but it was a pretty, uh, uh, had a lot of hidden, uh, tricks and different rabbit holes. We had to spend time deep to find out what it really meant. At the end of the day, I think it required the licensee to give back the liquor license to the owner who already had a liquor license to begin with. So it's things like that that, um, sometimes you don't always at first glance, uh, uh, think of when you receive these documents, but there will be a, uh, a pretty thorough vetting of all these financial legal documents because it is, it is a legal process and I just want to put out there that there is a lot of other people that may, that may be touching this application besides the, uh, the liquor committee members themselves.
Right, I agree. And, um, Michael resident, Mike Radzik's video feed went down wherever he's at, so, um, that's why he's not on the Zoom meeting like he was in the work session. I just wanted to state that. Alright, so we have a motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries unanimously. The next, um, item on the agenda is a request to approve the service agreement between Washoe County and Ipsleyne Township for the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty senior nutrition program.
Move to approve.
Support Eldridge.
Motion, um, Wilson Jr., support Eldridge. I know, um, Angela Burgess is also on the Zoom call. If you have any questions, are there any questions regarding this? So, um, we're doing twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty. Evidently it wasn't returned, um, to the township in twenty-nineteen, so we have to reapprove it with the changes and, um, attorney Winters has reviewed it. Angela, do you have anything else to add?
No, Madam Supervisor, nothing else to add at this time. You covered it for us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So we have a motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries unanimously. Number six, a request to approve the service agreement between Washoe County, Ipsleyne Township for the twenty twenty to twenty-twenty-one senior nutrition, senior nutrition program.
So move, Gerald Row.
Support Peterson.
Some motion in support to approve, um, the contract for this current year. Other questions or comments on it? Mr. Winters, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, and not only in this contract, but in the one that follows, um, and it sounds very technical and I guess it probably is, but uh, in all these contracts, the township, uh, is being asked to indemnify Washoe County, which is a standard clause, but as you've known from previous contracts, we always have a, I talked to Mike Hoffmeister today, we always have an extra sentence put in these paragraphs that's, make it clear that by, uh, nothing herein limits or waves or restricts the township from asserting it's a governmental immunity defense. I hate to, you know, always say that, but we talked about this in the past, but that has to go into these, um, contracts because we cannot waive our governmental immunity defense even when the contract involves another, another municipality. So Mike's aware of the language, uh, he and I talked about it today. And so that needs to be added to the contract in that one paragraph, number seven. And I think, I think the next agreement, the same language will need to be, will need to be added as well. Otherwise it's a proper form.
So, um, we approved the first one without that condition and that change, so we'll make that change on that one as well.
Yeah, in fact, if, if the first one, uh, the services have already been completed. That was in twenty-nineteen and they're, they're trying to get their bookkeeping order and I did find a letter back in twenty-nineteen where the same recommendation was made back in twenty-nineteen as well, so we've, we've, we've always made that as part of these contracts, so.
So we won't sign these until that language is inserted?
Yes.
Um, clerk Gerald Rowe?
Yeah, I was just wondering, attorney Winters, if you could, I know you said you talked to Mike about it, but could you just for me say again what you want it to say before I sign it?
Yeah.
It's in a letter, right?
It's just, um, the one, the one sentence we'll just read as follows. Nothing herein.
What page?
Under article seven, right?
I see, article seven. It'll be, nothing herein shall be construed to waive, comma, limit, comma, or restrict any governmental immunity defense available to the contractor, Ipsley Township.
Did they agree to that, Mr. Winters?
They always have in the past because that's standard language.
I agree with you. We can't waive our immunity.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion in support to approve the contract with those changes as noted, and this expires in September of this year, so we'll have to remember in maybe July or June to ask them to send it to us again so that we can put it on the future agendas this year. Time is already going past, you guys. Any more questions or comments?
I was just wondering about the first one, the line that said that it was substantially different than what was approved the first time. Is there a way for someone, there is a possible for us to get a little summary about what it was different?
Angela, um, Burgess, do you have those changes?
I don't know what it is offhand without looking at them side by side, but it was something that they changed from year to year in there. And I know that, um, attorney Winters had caught that for us, that there was a, a difference in the two contracts.
It didn't increase our costs or the substantial change didn't?
No, it didn't affect cost in, in any way because they, uh, reimburse us for, for money spent. So, you know.
When they sent the contract over, it was just substantially different than it had been previously. So, um, attorney Winters reviewed it and requested all these changes to it. And it looks like the one wasn't in it, but twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty is already over and we can't get reimbursement unless we have a signed contract. Any other questions or comment? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with the change inserted by Mr., um, as requested by our attorney. Number seven is a request to approve, to apply for the twenty-twenty-one Community Development Block Grant in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars to complete the design and engineering for phase two of the reimagined Washoe and Ipsleyne Township.
So move, Gerald Row.
Support Swanson.
Ms. Gerald Row, support, um, Swanson. I know that Mr. Hoffmeister is, um, on the Zoom call. Would you like to summarize it?
Sure. Uh, good evening, everyone. Mike Hoffmeister, Residential Services Director. Um, as you know, each year Ipsley Township is allotted a number of dollars allocated by the Community Development Block Grant, uh, through Washoe County. We've been having a number of conversations with them through the last month or so regarding our twenty-twenty-one allotment and prioritizing projects for that allotment of funding. Um, it was, uh, recommended by staff as well as in partnership with Washoe County that we utilize the twenty-twenty-one application and funds to start, uh, the design, engineering and easement work related to completing Reimagine Washoe, which was started, I believe, in two thousand and twenty. And so we are in current, um, discussions with Washoe County to complete the application. The deadline is February twelfth for that, for that application. And, uh, the Office of Community Economic Development from the county is assisting us with that application. Um, this is, uh, an intent, so the board can go ahead and support the intent of the funding if awarded for the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year.
Questions or comments? If board members, um, would recall, I, in, I think it was before the new board members were installed, but a resident had requested the process for how we allocate CBDG dollars. So, and in the past, we would just do it internally, so now we're going to start just to formally do it. And, um, so everyone's aware of how we intend on using the CBDG dollars for, um, our allocation. No, it was a recommendation by, um, one of our residents to clearly define a process, so we're doing that. We have a motion in, in support. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight is budget amendment number two. Clerk Gerald Rowe?
Alright, I have, um, budget amendment number two for twenty-twenty-one. Um, and just to briefly explain what this does, um, it, it moves our current budgeted revenue and expenditure amounts into two separate funds. And this was at the recommendation of our auditor, um, at PSLZ, who we've used for a long time. And it's just to, oh, you're home here, Joe. I'm sorry, I'm like doing your. It's just to reallocate those or to separate the funds so that the millage funds go into, you know, their separate spaces. And I'm sure that Javana can answer any other questions if I'm not explaining it correctly.
No, I think you went over it really well. Heather, thank you so much. Um, so it was recommended by the auditor to go ahead and separate the special millages that we have for pension and for the capital improvements, capital and capital improvements into their own separate funds. We have tracked those internally with their own cost centers. Um, and however, on our financial statements, we did separate those. So we have to separate them anyway. We have to track them separate, so we just thought it would be best to go ahead and give them their own fund so that we could look at those at any time and pull those up um, within just a very quick amount of time instead of, uh, having to do spreadsheets for those. So, um, the budget amendment is asking for us to reduce the fund balance, uh, the, the funds in that were budgeted for twenty-twenty-one in the fire fund by the two million, five hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars. And then to split those into the, uh, separate funds for pension and then for the capital millage.
Alright, I'm sorry I broke Robert's rules. I should have read the motion first. Um, so I have motion to amend the twenty-twenty-one budget. Um, I would move to decrease the fire fund budget by two million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars to four million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, uh, and seventy-two dollars. And approve the department line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the fire pension and OPAD millage fund by one million, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, ten dollars to one million, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, thousand and ten dollars. And approve the department line items, uh, changes as outlined. Move to increase the new fire special millage capital fund budget by six hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars to six hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. And approve the department line item changes as outlined. So move.
There's a motion by Gerald Row.
Support Swanson.
Thank you. Support by Swanson. Discussion. What we'll do is, um, we'll put them in your mailboxes, but we'll make tabs in the new, um, sections in the budget for the twenty-twenty-one budget for everyone to have for their, um, binder and stuff. And then in moving forward, we'll have these in twenty-twenty-two and beyond. Alright, we have a motion. Oh, we have one. Mr. Newman?
So this, this will be a cleaner way to segregate all of the different funds?
Millages. The millages, yes. Correct. Yeah, we've just, we've just done it. We've split it in the financial statements, but it's been in one fund, so this is just a better way to track it. I will be coming back to the board, um, for your pleasure to, at the end of the year for the twenty-twenty, we will have a fund balance, uh, left over that will need to be transferred to those funds, the new funds that we have, and I'll bring that back in July. Just to let you know.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? The motion carries unanimously. Authorization in biz, we have the request to award the low bid for the publishing of the Ipsleyne Township Magazine to Community Publishing and Marketing in the amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents per year for three years, budget and line items, two, two-two-six, two-two-six, zero-zero-zero, nine-hundred, zero-zero-zero, two-three-zero, seven-five-one, zero-zero-zero, eight-hundred, zero-zero-zero, and, um, one-on-one, two-six-seven, zero-zero-zero, nine-hundred. And approval of the agreement contingent upon, um, the attorney's review.
So move Eldridge.
Support Peterson.
Motion, um, Eldridge, supported by Peterson? Mr. Hoffmeister?
Yes, good evening again. Um, back in late two thousand and twenty, the board authorized staff to go out to bid using RFP process to seek sealed bids regarding a newly, um, a new idea of a township magazine. We did receive four bids, which was great to see. Um, there's our new one. Thank you Supervisor Stumbo. Hopefully everyone has received that. Uh, that is the first edition in the, in the thought process of having three editions per year. Um, obviously we'll only have two more additions printed in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, so the actual dollar value slated for twenty-twenty-one is approximately twenty thousand and nine hundred and five dollars by. Um, and then going forward, we would budget the full thirty-one thousand dollar amount in future years of the agreement. The idea is to get more, uh, documents, more news, more rec programming, golf and township news, recycling reminders, et cetera, into the hands of our residents. Um, we know social media does a lot, but not everything. And so we feel it's important to get more information into our residents' hands more often. And so that's the idea. Um, Community Publishing and Marketing does a number of magazines for other communities throughout the metro Detroit area. Uh, they have what they call as their Today brand. Uh, we are not going with that. what they call as their today brand we are not going with that particular brand we would like to start our own Ipsy Township brand and so that's what we're looking for so I'm hoping that that this goes through it's an exciting opportunity to to publish what we're doing more often and brag a little bit more about what we're doing in the township.
Questions or comments?
Yes Madam Chair.
Yes Trustee Wilson.
Yeah Mike I wanted to ask you I think I seen in the memo that the first edition went out through Allegra and you say we were previously under contract with them is that that contract is completed now right or okay and then as far as content and design you'll be kind of working with them hand in hand?
That's correct so so staff staff will work with the designer hand in hand we will ensure that it is reviewed by elected officials anybody that has content will review content basically it's not just me it's the RSD clerks it's rec staff it's golf staff and you know park staff members as well just to touch on the Allegra comment this this was put out to bid five years ago for one publication per year which is the helpful handbook and 2021 was indeed the last edition as part of that agreement.
Okay and then a final question I had is the three year was there any reason we didn't or I guess I should ask in the contract I didn't see it is there a way if we are not satisfied in the first year or two to get out of this contract that we do not owe for the remainder of the contract?
We can put that in there because it's approval upon the attorney.
That's a great point thank you for bringing that up.
Okay if we could add that in the motion to you know I think it was in there wasn't it per attorney approval all right.
Yeah.
All right great thank you.
Good point Jimmy Allegra has done an outstanding job for the township and they were this must not be their niche because they were like $16,000 higher I think almost 6,000 higher per.
Year.
No per publishing yeah I was surprised that they did they have done a great job for Ipsy Township and we changed the whole way we did it for our last edition I think we I hope you have we received positive responses and they love the pictures and it was I I haven't heard any negative you know about the new layout and Mike Hoffmeister really championed that and brought it forward and Carly and everyone had to cement all their information and it's it's quite a undertaking to do but I do think it it turned out very very well Michael and I commend you on that and all the staff that worked on it but I'm going to miss Allegra but hey this this is an experienced publishing and marketing company so we'll make it work and if we don't like it we'll get out right right Mr. Winters?
Right it's a pretty skinny contract right now so if I heard if I heard Trustee Wilson you want to have a one-year contract with an option to extend a second year as opposed to.
Well the three years fine as long as there's a get out clause somewhere where we won't be on the hook for the remainder of the contract at whatever time we want to get out of the contract.
Well yeah there was actually a bid that was put out for this.
The first and the first and second bid are pretty close that's why I'm asking I don't know if we wanted is it with an option so many days prior to the beginning of the second year whether or not we want to stay with them something along those lines that might be.
The only thing is I think we bid it out for a three-year contract I'd have to go back to the bids I can't recall but we'd have to compare them but if the quality is not there and which I think it will be I'm not saying it's not but we would probably need a opt-out clause or dissatisfied with the product or something is which is a good point Jimmy because this is a brand new contract last time we just awarded the bid right we didn't really have a contract like this.
So is there is an opt-out clause possible being that we did go out for a three-year bid?
Yeah I mean.
Okay.
I mean I know I'm not an attorney but Mr. Winters heard what you said about somehow making sure that they meet because that has to be delivered by a certain time you know there's there's a schedule that they have to meet in order to get it mailed and in the houses for the residents but I know this based on what was said that they're an experienced company but we do need to do we normally don't have a contract so this is something new maybe.
Okay.
We can add that more language to it per per attorney but it's an excellent point. Is that enough information or direction Mr. Winters?
Yeah I think I think I know where you're going with the with the suggestions and I think I can work with Mike and try and satisfy that.
Great we gotta do it soon because then when's it going out April is going to be is the next one so we can do it though we can do it. So we have a motion and support to approve it contingent upon the attorney's review and approval all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none motion carries unanimously there's no other business before the board so are there any board member updates?
Yes Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes I just wanted to kind of remind the board as well as our township attorney that I believe March 31st we have a sunset provision coming up for the marijuana ordinances so I don't know where we're at with that but I don't know if we need to because I know it takes two readings to do anything with the ordinance so if that's something that we need to think about pushing back further possibly if we're not ready or if we need to buckle down in the month of February to get something put together but I just wanted to kind of make everyone aware reminding that that's coming.
Thank you Mr. Wilson Heather Gerald Row.
Yeah thank you Madam Chair I just wanted to quickly share with everyone that this morning at the recreation conference Mike Hoffmeister and Angela Burgess and everyone they were just recognized our township was recognized for a skate park facility that was built so just to give them a little shout out for all the work they did and thank you thank you guys and we're excited about that being in our township we should all be proud of it.
Thank you Trustee Swanson.
So I just wanted to say thank you to the staff again I'm very grateful for the hard work it's clear when you look at the packets the work that our staff is putting in including the three town officials I'm very grateful for that specifically I'd like to say thank you to Robin Castle Heinz and Carly I think Willis is her last name I've attended two neighborhood watch meetings and I'm they're they're such great ambassadors for the township so the way they interact with residents the way they answer questions they're so positive and they're upbeat and you can tell they've built relationships with the neighborhood watch leaders and also very grateful for the people who stepped up in the neighborhoods to be leaders I want to extend a gratitude for that too but those two staff members and there are probably other people who come also but they really do a nice job being ambassadors for the township and meeting with the residents so I want to say that I appreciate the employees and I'd like to give a shout out to Robin and to Carly tonight thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I know speaking of employees then Stan and I discussed this yesterday about it's so different to collect taxes right now and people are making appointments and the employees are really going the extra mile to accommodate the residents because you have to let them in the door and you know walk them in and then one employee in particular actually walked a senior citizen out and it's really great how much our resident our employees continue to serve our residents even during the pandemic and and I I agree with you Debbie I appreciate it yeah applause is right I do know that Trustee Swanson is gathering information still on the ethics policy and hopes to bring it back to the board in the next 30 days just a discussion on it and we have had meetings with Green Oaks Golf Course and regarding the liquor license there and some of the things that we need to make sure are in place so we're proceeding to work on that we had a meeting on that as well like Heather said we received the award from the Michigan Parks for our skate park design it's M Parks Magazine recognized us and for the design of our community skate park and we because the things we did also included our drain commission and just sustainability and the way they were really impressed by our skate park and we were given the award and Stan and Heather and I were on Zoom watching it it's not the same but we were still excited and very proud of the staff Hoffmeister and Angie and John Heinz who was involved with it so that was cool another good news is Crazy Crab at 2800 Washoung at the old big boy is going to be on the planning commission agenda for consideration of a transfer is it a transfer of a license I think I'm not sure but the Crazy Crab restaurant is actually going to the planning commission I think that's very exciting as well and I can't think of anything else other than that's it I just want to update everyone I had to thank everyone and the patience of the board members when we're trying to get through the Zoom eventually I'd like to get what people are seeing or what people are reading I would like the public to be able to see so we have to share a screen to do that and we're going to get there but we appreciate everyone's patience and the public's patience as well so all we need is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion Wilson Jr. support Peterson all in favor?
Aye.
I agree and the meeting is adjourned at 8:04 and is it adios Heather? That's what her daughter was teaching me all right thanks everyone have a good day and I'll see we'll see you all in two weeks.
All right.